Welcome to San Clemente's Video Library. I'm Joanne Bade, City Clerk of the City of San Clemente. To skip this introduction, click on Skip Intro. This video will play on most Internet connections. To fast-forward or to advance to a particular agenda item may require additional loading time. To access a particular portion of the meeting, please click on one of the links on the right side of this screen. The Show Help link below explains various features that are available with this site. If you have questions or encounter difficulties, please call my office at 361-8200. Thank you. Welcome to the Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, February 19, 2014. If Commissioner -- that was a blank. Yes, if Commissioner Kathleen Ward would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I beg your pardon.
(Inaudible)
Let's hope that doesn't pretend the function of my mind for the rest of the evening. Mr. Petches, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Adelston.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner, um, um...
(Laughter).
(Inaudible).
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
And Commissioner Kelp is absent tonight, and Commissioner Wuland.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have two sets of minutes tonight. We have the minutes from the study session of February 5, 2014. Are there any changes, additions, or motions?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Okay, so that passes five with one abstention. And then the minutes from the Planning Commission Meeting of February 5, 2014.
I have a change.
Okay.
An addition. Above the last paragraph, Assistant Planer Tamian, I'd like to enter...
Is that on page three?
On page three. Commissioner Brown suggested utilizing the city's code enforcement officer to enforce signage issues at the shopping center.
Okay. Any other changes?
I'll move to approve. With change?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And what abstention? Okay. All right. Members of the audience may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda at this time. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the public hearing process. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentations to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first matter before us, and the only matter before us tonight, is Item A, 418 Casador Lane, a cultural heritage permit, 13-215 Casa Amorado. And B, before Mr. Champus gives us his staff report, I ask for some guidance from staff. There've been some ancillary issues that have come up regarding this application. We're getting code enforcement and also the HPP application that was awarded to this applicant. Would you please provide us with some guidance on those issues and whether they're germane to our discussion tonight?
Madam Chair, before you start, I just want to... According to the map that the city has provided me, I am able to deal with this issue. It's beyond the 500-foot line.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Well, and both topics are, you know, certainly, in terms of relation to this application, are okay to talk about. As far as the Mills Act contract itself and any changes or amendments to that contract, that's not agendized, so that would be off-limits. Plus, it's not even the purview of the Planning Commission. The Mills Act contract is approved by the City Council, so it would be something that would be a matter for the City Council to deal with. And in regard to the code enforcement, I think I'll let it G...
Yeah, so there's... There may be some discussion regarding code enforcement issues at the property, and it's fine as part of the discussion. With regards to... A couple of questions have already come up from at least one of the Planning Commissioners. A, is it proper for an applicant to come forward with an application when they have existing code violations at the property? The answer to that, in my opinion, is yes, that does happen. There's no prohibition in our code that I'm aware of that says if you are in violation of the code, you can't apply for a permit. And oftentimes, that is what happens to remedy the violation. B, an issue has also come up as to whether or not a denial of the permit could be premised on the basis that there is a code violation. And for that, the issue... The answer to that's a little bit more murky, and it would have to be a decision of the Planning Commission that that code violation somehow relates to one of the findings and doesn't allow for the Planning Commission to make one of the findings that's required to make in order to pass a permit.
Okay, so if a Planning Commissioner felt that denial was justified based on a code enforcement issue, he or she would need to relate it to the findings, and they would be advised to do so when they're expressing their position?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question for G. Inasmuch as there is an issue here with regards to the Mills Act, because one of the conditions is that they have not completed one of the items on the Mills Act review, is that not germane to the conversation?
Well, you're speaking in terms of the agreement with the city?
Yes.
The agreement with the city is more of the purview of the City Council to deal with than the Planning Commissioners, so I would probably hesitate to premise denial based on that, a potential violation of that agreement.
But it's in the... It's in the agenda here.
I understand. But revocations, changes to those agreements is a decision made by the City Council, not a decision made...
No, I realize that, but we can't even mention the Mills Act in our discussion?
No, no. I understand that it can be discussed, but premising a denial on that, I think, is something that would be within the City Council's...
Right, no, I understand that. No, I understand that, but discussing the implications of the Mills Act on this is perfectly acceptable.
That's acceptable. All right.
For example, I know Mr. Champus is going to talk about one of the modifications that they're making addresses one of those issues. So he can do that, and we can ask him questions about that.
Yeah, absolutely. My apologies if I misinterpreted your question.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions on those issues? Okay. All right, John Heewood, please.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. This is the Amorado Residence. It's a request for a cultural heritage permit. The property is located at 418 Casador Lane, within the Pier Bowl specific plan. It's a zoned residential medium. Just to give you a little background on this project, it was before you briefly in December of 2013, where the original project proposed the elimination of the master bedroom closet to continue the balcony, the full width of the west elevation. The Planning Commission discussed or directed staff to direct the project back to the designer review to determine if that master bedroom closet or enclosed balcony was original and would be considered historic. And later photos were discovered showing that... 1920 photos showing that that was there at that point in time, which would make it or consider it historic. The project's scope has been modified to retain that element of the structure, and other elements of the project were eliminated as well. Code enforcement has opened up a case on the project related to the illegal units, and is part of this project is to remedy that... the illegal units. The project description is... includes an interior remodel and 597 square foot addition to the historic house. It also includes exterior improvements that include new windows, doors, and the Juliet balcony, the completion of the final HPPA improvement, landscape and hardscape improvements, and the long-term preservation of the historic resource. These are just some views of the property. The west-facing view to your left, and then the south-facing view to your right. Says the property is located on a triangular-shaped lot. This is the site plan of the proposed project. The house is in a T shape, as you can see highlighted in the green. This is the... Highlighted in the green is the 1948 addition of approximately 540 square feet. And then you can see in the darker gray, the expansion of the master bedroom on the second floor or main level, and then also a basement-level addition for the first level. This is the first-floor plan, and as you can see, it does... The expansion is related to the back... the upper right-hand corner, pushing a retaining wall back to create some additional square footage for extra rooms and additional bathroom in the lower level, along with a minor expansion to the garage, I believe it's 64 square feet. The main level or second floor proposes the addition above the first-floor addition, stepping out the master bedroom with a bathroom and closet, as well as filling in a small portion where the 1948 addition was completed.
Oh, thanks.
Going through the elevations of the property to discuss the improvements, on the south elevation, there are two improvements that are proposed. One are the doors that you can see on the left photo... I'm sorry, the right photo. They're four individual doors, and the proposal is to make those into two French doors, along with the wood pop-out bay window soffit, if you will, the modifying that to a rectangular projection to fill in the voids under the roof overhang, and which would be a stucco improvement, and that's to address the Mills Act improvement that was identified.
Can I ask you one question at that point, since we're on that?
Sure.
When I looked at what was required of that window, it says, "Removal of the wood soffit and replacement of the wood siding with white stucco to match the rest of the structure at the bay window of the west elevation." It says, "To the extent feasible, the element should be restored to its original appearance in accordance with any documentation from the period of the home's initial construction era." This bay window is the original construction back in 1948, is it not?
We don't have record that it was constructed in 1948. We don't have any record of when exactly it was completed. It's our assumption that it was at that period or later, based on its construction with the wood siding and the way the roof overhangs over the angled windows, and the spacing between the windows is not a traditional spacing for a Spanish colonial revival architecture. So it's assumed that it was a later addition, possibly 1948 or later.
Okay, but in number B, does it say that that window must be squared off and restored to a different colonial revival style?
No.
It doesn't state that?
But that was the proposal that the applicant was addressing.
Okay.
The applicant can't respond to a more scaled-down version of that that I know they're prepared to respond to.
But to be clear, that's not a requirement of the HEPA agreement, that that window be squared off?
Okay. There's a number of ways to comply to that agreement. It's not, you know, that specific that there's only one solution. If we had a photograph of that elevation, that would be the ultimate best thing, but unfortunately, no one has been able to come up with that at this point. So what we want to do is bring it back to something traditional. Clearly, that bay window was something that was constructed that was out of the error of the historical importance of this particular structure. So the Mills Act, the simplest thing to do would be just to cover up the wood in stucco.
With stucco.
So that's one option. They could do that to comply. This would also be considered complying as another option. Now, the Planning Commission would prefer to have the more simpler option, and that would be something certainly within your...
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, since you were on that. Okay.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And in addressing this elevation is that in the review of the replacement of the doors on the left photo, two French doors, staff was in support of that, along with the design review, because it was a later addition that was not... is not part of the historic significance or historic period of significance for the structure, and that's why that was deemed an acceptable improvement, along with the design of those French doors that are consistent with the architecture and design of the period... the Spanish colonial period of the building.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Because you are on those doors. Who decides at what point things become historically significant? Who is the deciding power on that?
Well, I think staff can definitely make an interpretation of that. The property was surveyed in 1996 and 2006.
Right.
And there was no identification of those being of any historic significance. There really was really no mention of that in the review, and it did identify the character-defining features of the property, and those were not included as...
But what about the one standard of when items have been there long enough that they become historically significant?
It would have to be resurveyed to establish, is this significant? What made it significant? There are certain criteria that make it significant. The significance identified in the DPR form is the period of significance and, you know, the individuals that lived there, you know, when it was originally built. So because this is outside the period of significance, that's why staff has identified this as a non-historic contributing addition.
So absent of anything that says it is significant, it would be tough to conclude that it should be considered a significant addition in and of itself. So we would have to resurvey or have some kind of evaluation...
By historical expert?
Yeah. So, and frankly, I think that the, you know, the original building is... The 1928 portion of the building clearly is the significant portion of this property and the thing that we want to pay the most attention to. So if you are going to make a modification anywhere on the building, for sure, the best place to do it would be the later addition.
I'm just... I'm having a hard time with something that's been there for 66 years that is not now historically significant and was included... was not mentioned in those two studies, the surveys. However, those two studies said that this was an outstanding example of colonial revival architecture, and the house currently is, I think, a 3D, which can you explain what that is?
There's rating levels for historic properties, I believe this. It allows it to be eligible for individual...
And I believe also a district level...
District level, yeah.
Because of the two other landmark houses that are with it next to it.
Yeah, and there's a cluster of historic properties in the area, so that's what was identified.
So does that mean that the other houses in the area have not been modified, or we have a good pedigree on them also?
Fair mention, Jim, in the review...
Well, there's a number of buildings in the area that definitely have historic significance in... For instance, Sea Cliff across the street is a very significant building, particularly with the combination of the house and the garden steel...
As in, I walked around the property, I was invited aboard the property by one of the tenants, and the house to the left of it has an inappropriate add-on in the back of it.
Is it visible from the public right-of-way?
It's visible from where I walked on the property.
So it's in the back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Jim, if this applicant had come forward and said that they wanted to return the property to its original... the original integrity of the original structure, and they wanted to remove any additions, would we allow them to remove the additions that have been done, because the period of historic significance was, you know, between 1926 and 1935? Would they be allowed to do that if they wanted to go back to that original structure?
It depends, but again, an example would be what we call the... In the Casa Romanica, when we did that, there's an addition that was built in probably about the same era as this, in the 40s. So it was in itself pretty old, and it's where you first walk into the one side... They call it the crucifix-shaped portion of the building, and that particular portion of the building was considered not significant in the evaluation, because it was a later addition, and it clearly wasn't something that Olay Hanson had built. And so I would guess that in that kind of evaluation, the most important by... For sure, the most important thing about this building is the original structure that was built in 1928. That would be the higher evaluation. Whether this other addition has somehow gained significance because it has some kind of architectural feature, which I don't see, or it has some kind of significant event, which I don't know about, or if it was designed by some, you know, noteworthy architect that I don't think has happened, I don't know where that has gained that significance. So absent of that, I wouldn't say it has. Now, if you were to ask me, can we tear that completely, that whole section of the building off? I think I'd want to have some more evaluation of the property, you know, some more research to see who the architect was, make sure that nothing significant happened, and make it clear that it wasn't an important architectural element of the building. So I think it would take more evaluation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the west elevation facing the ocean. On our left, we have the new proposal, and our right, we have the existing. As part of this elevation, there are a couple of modifications that are proposed. First is the removal of the awnings that you can see at the forefront of the house under the three doors. Then we have the conversion of the first-floor windows next to the garage door to French doors, as you can see the comparison on the new proposal. And then the last is the enlargement of the windows for the enclosed balcony or the master bedroom closet, expanding them from a width of, I think, eight inches?
Twelve.
Eight. Oh, from 12 inches to 20 inches, yes. So in staff's review of this, we look to see, are these modifications to any character-defining features of this elevation? And through staff's review and the designer view, it was determined that there were no modifications, any character-defining features, and the changes are insignificant and do not change the overall appearance of the elevation or any character-defining features associated with it.
A quick question. While we're on this photograph, some of the older photographs I've looked at, the retaining walls that go out to the street, have been there for quite a long while. And I assume you're going to retain those, because that's the way the landscape plot looks. However, one of the conditional approvals we have in there is to put sidewalks in on them, and so maybe we should eliminate one of the conditional approvals in here that requires, or at least modify it so that you don't have to put a sidewalk in. I think it's...
Well, we did review this as part of our development team review process, and the sidewalks are only proposed for a portion of the south elevation, actually to where... about where the stairs are for the main entrance. Yes. And so that would retain all of the historic or original walls, and then the engineering division has recommended a waiver of the sidewalks and gutters for the remaining portion, so it would not have any impact to the retaining walls or anything of that sort.
Well, conditional approval number 23A doesn't state any of that. It kind of says, "Do sidewalks everywhere," so maybe you ought to amend that a little bit to... So what we want to do here, I don't think we want to tear out the wall.
Yeah, well...
Anyway, it's just a comment, since we're on that photograph.
Okay.
Yeah, there's really not enough room there for a sidewalk.
Yeah, it's a very narrow street.
You know, it's a narrow street. If you put a sidewalk in, when you're driving down that street now, you know, it's very narrow. I would recommend that there be no sidewalks in there at all. I mean, people walk in that area, they walk on the street, or they walk across the street where there is a sidewalk, so there is access for a sidewalk across the street. But putting a sidewalk in there is just not feasible as far as space is concerned.
Yeah.
I can't imagine that at all.
That was something that was evaluated by the engineering division, and as you get near the front door entrance, is where it really kind of narrows down.
Yeah.
And the staff was able to evaluate that they could still get in a sidewalk and have the adequate spacing to preserve the parking that's there, and then whenever it does get narrow, they can eliminate any requirement as it goes around the bend there, past the front door. Because there's also, I think it's like an SD Genie well in the street as well, so it would require the moving of that, so it really got pretty complex as we were looking at to continue it around the bend, so...
Landscaping doesn't show any sidewalk at all, or...
No, it doesn't.
Yeah.
This is prepared before you added the condition of approval?
I think that just was looking at the landscaping only associated with it.
Most landscaping homes have sidewalks. Do you mind? I have a suggestion.
The sidewalk requirement is a municipal code requirement, and so this happens to us a lot with historic properties, and, you know, find out, and says, "No, no, no sidewalks. We can't do that." So the process is that anything over $50,000 has to provide sidewalks, just automatically per the code. And then there's a built-in process where the city manager can waive the requirement if it's justified, so we have to provide the justification of why the sidewalk isn't extending all the way around. But that last little stretch that is in here, we can still retain all the historic fabric and provide the sidewalks, so that part can't be waived. So if we want to modify 23 to be more specific to what was already determined, then I think that's fine, but... Or even if we eliminated 23, the municipal code still applies either way, so...
Yeah. I just wanted to point that out.
So everybody's aware that it's not just an engineering requirement, it's a city code.
Yeah. I have another question. We're talking about the windows on the pop-out...
Oh, on the pop-out?
On the... By the deck on the front?
Oh, okay.
The windows there? If you could go back to that?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. What specifically in the Secretary of Interior Standards did you review that specifically said that it was all right to do that with the windows there?
Well, in staff's review of the project, along with the DPR forms that identify the character-defining features of the project, staff determined that those windows were not identified as character-defining features, and the standards nine and 10 do allow for modifications to historic structures, and this would be a reversible improvement, which would be compliance with standard 10.
Okay. I have the Secretary of Interior Standards here, and I just wanted to read it, because I think it's important. It says, "For windows, recommending identifying, retaining, and preserving windows and their functional and decorative features that are important in defining the overall historic character of the building." These windows were original, weren't they?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then that was recommended, but what's not recommended is changing historical... the historic appearance of windows by replacing materials, finishes, or colors which noticeably change the sag, depth of reveal, and mutant configuration, the reflectivity, and the color of the glazing, or the appearance of the frame. So that's what... Here's in the Secretary of Interior Standards, that's what's not recommended. So I'm trying to understand how you made that determination when the Secretary of Interior Standards said something else here.
If I may, we made a... It might be helpful to look at another project and look at what's parallel about the two of them. With the Beach Club, there were original windows that... parallel about the two of them. With the Beach Club, there were original windows that staff also recommended that we alter or remove. And you felt that that met the Secretary of Interior Standards. So sometimes you feel that it is appropriate.
Secretary of Interior Standards are not like setbacks. They're interpretive. And part of the art and craft of historic preservation is looking at the reuse, this is a rehabilitation project, a reuse of a building, to guarantee it's long-term preservation for the good of the community. So we do allow some flexibility and some changes to the exterior. It's not like you have to retain everything. Now, is it within the purview as you, is the planning commission to recommend that change not occur? Yes. So you could say that, you know what, we think that that is a character-defining feature and something we want to preserve. We're looking at it holistically. If you look at those two elevations, you're retaining the character of that historic elevation from the street, in our opinion. Could other opinions vary from that? Yes. So if you think that's an important feature that is a character, defines the character of the historic building, and it shouldn't be changed, then by all means, make that recommendation. But the standards are flexible. There isn't, it isn't quite as black and white as, you know, it's a 20-foot setback, or it's not a 20-foot setback. So they're interpretive.
Thank you, John.
All right, looking at the north elevation, the proposed modifications include the addition of a Juliet balcony, a single-door window for the second story, and then a window for the first story. So these are changes also that we reviewed in the same way as the modifications to the west elevation, in that this is an elevation that isn't seen as the primary elevations to the building, and that the primary are the west and south elevations. And it is a nondescript elevation that could allow for these types of improvements.
And then, John, can you explain, because this was news, or it's kind of a surprise to me, these two features right here, what they are, and what was original there?
What was originally there were, well, the two shutters are remaining, but there was a window in between those two shutters, and that has been since covered. So what's remaining is only the shutters to that elevation. Kind of an odd feature, but...
That's interesting. I just assumed there were windows behind those shutters.
Yeah.
Do you have, actually, documentation that there was a large window there at one time, then?
It actually didn't look that big. I mean, it was a faraway photo, but in one of our books with the history of San Clemente, and it does have a photo showing that. And it, you know, I was able to clearly tell because there was, you know, dark space in between the two shutters, so...
Were the shutters in?
Yeah, the shutters were there. So that's, that kind of was what led me to this, so...
It's kind of like wearing suspenders with no pants.
Yeah, right.
Kathy, you had a question?
John, I have one more question on that north elevation. You only spoke about the window features, but there is an addition to the back of the house that is visible on that north elevation, right?
Yes.
Okay, wait, okay. And this elevation is visible from the public right-of-way, even though you don't consider it a primary elevation?
Yes.
It is visible?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So as you can see, the roof line of the, the roof line as it changes in the photo, you can see kind of just above where the Juliet balcony area is, it has a more horizontal angle. That's the area where the addition is proposed. So you do see a little bit of the second and first story. It is located at the back of the property, so that is what its staff encourages in terms of locating the additions to reduce any visual impact.
And clearly, we approved a number of additions in town where you can see the addition from the public right-of-way. The idea is that the addition isn't overwhelmed or become, remains subordinate to the original structure. It's not that there's some, you know, moratorium on any visibility of addition from the street.
There are two of these on my street, one of which we just approved and is, I think, for final inspection right now. One right across the street from me, and one up the street that puts second stories on single-story residences.
And one of the things I'm looking at this, when I was talking about the roof line, the change in the roof line does show that differentiation from the original structure to the new addition. So that does assist in the differentiation of the feature.
Jim?
Yeah, John, regarding the Juliet balcony, was it your feeling that this is not a significant feature or effect on the historic building because it's on the north elevation, and you think that that's a minor elevation? Is that, was that the reasoning, or is there another kind of reasoning?
That is, that's one of the justifications that staff felt that that was an appropriate proposal, and that also that it is a compatible feature, and that, you know, it is, would be an acceptable improvement.
Could you maybe highlight a little bit what the, kind of what the definition of a compatible feature is? Because that's part of the original 1928 building on that side, right? Not like the other one from the 1940s. So when we, when the historical guidelines say a compatible feature, what is that, you know, sort of what is the scope of that? What is, and I know it's not going to be, you know, specific, but in general, what is the scope of a compatible feature?
What we look at in compatibility is consistency with the architectural design of the structure. So this is a typical Spanish colonial revival element. As you can see on the elevation, on the, whoops, on the west elevation, we kind of have an enlarged balcony that's wrought iron there. So the proposal on the, on this north elevation is a consistent type of architectural feature or addition to that elevation.
And I'm just trying to get my, sort of get a context here. So for instance, if we extended the balcony itself, the main balcony, and just kind of wrapped it around the building, would that be considered a consistent element?
If that wasn't a historic portion of the building, probably yes.
I'm sorry, would be?
Let me jump in here, because if you're taking a feature that, what, this is kind of a, you know, certainly this elevation can be seen from the street. But if I, you know, had you look at this building and all around it for, you know, five minutes, and then you closed your eyes and you described it to me, I doubt too many people would be describing this side of the building as the first thing they think of. So it's not the main, I think it's fair to say that this is not the main elevation of the building, or the most important elevation of the building. Is it the least important? No, but it's not the most important. So I think there's a little bit more flexibility there. But as soon as you take a feature from the main front of the building, and you extend it and wrap it around, I think you're changing the character of the front of the building, that might be a problem. Adding, you know, some fenestration on the side of this less important elevation can become a problem if it becomes, you know, the whole idea of keeping it subordinate. Right now, it's a, you know, it's a secondary elevation. If you do something to this elevation and make it more of a primary elevation from a historic standpoint, I think that's a problem. So, you know, there's a certain amount of addressing up that you can do, but you know, there's kind of a tilting point, though, or maybe it becomes a problem.
Okay, good. That's a good explanation. And, I beg your pardon. Would this, does this, this also, I assume, falls under the category of it is something that is reversible or removable? So that's another reason why it's, it's considered reversible or removable, so it's one of the reasons why it's permitted? In the staff's opinion?
Yes.
Okay.
For my clarification, so while there isn't a character-defining feature on this elevation that needs to be preserved, in a sense, the subordinate nature of this elevation, in your opinion, should be preserved?
Yeah, I think so. I think it shouldn't, it shouldn't become the most important elevation on the building when it, because then that affects the areas that are the primary and more character-defining features of the building.
Okay.
I have, I have one question to that, concerning the Juliet balcony, and it, us adding a feature to that. The Secretary of Interior, the standards number three listed in our design guidelines says, "All building structures and sites shall be recognized as products of their own time. Alterations that have no historical basis and which seek to mate an earlier appearance shall be discouraged." Don't you think adding that design, the Juliet balcony, might be misinterpreted as an original feature, historical feature?
It could, but we also have standards nine that says that you can have new additions and exterior alterations that are, that are new construction and won't destroy certain features. So I think what we try and do there is we try and balance and say, okay, is this giving a false sense of history associated with it? And so with the new materials, the new stucco on that extra side there for the addition, and the door, and the new Juliet balcony, that will apply some of that differentiation to show that it is not an original feature. Now, a lot of these are, you know, you have to go down to more to the trained eye, but that is something that's been consistently applied with projects in the past.
Well, a long time ago in San Clemente, that's a, Wayne, you've been to a lot of the conferences, the CPF conferences, and that's a debate we hear almost every time we go, which is this whole issue between differentiating and compatibility. Well, some jurisdictions believe you differentiate so clearly that you have like a, you know, like the pyramid, you know, in front of the Louvre. And in other jurisdictions like us, we believe that, you know, it's more important to stick with O.L.A. Hanson's theme and not do a shocking change, so your changes are more subtle, subtle, so that, you know, the differentiation is by using a more modern material. You know, that wrought iron railing should definitely not match exactly the front elevation, so differentiate it in a subtle way. The stucco might be a little bit more smooth than the original stucco where you add the addition. The small, minor changes, and that's what's been the acceptable methodology for our city since, you know, we begun historic preservation in the city.
Thanks, Jim.
So in just to address the code enforcement issues associated with it, I did address it in the staff report. I wanted to bring it up in the presentation. The condition has been added to the conditions of approval, bless you, to ensure that the house is converted back to single-family residence. As you can see from the floor plans, the house is proposed to be brought back to single-family residence, and code enforcement believes that it is an appropriate timeline for the improvements based on the steps that the applicant has to go through in dealing with the tenants and getting them vacated from the premises, along with going through building plan check in the coastal commission.
Wayne, one question?
Yeah. It's three units right now. It's being used as three units. How many illegal bathrooms and illegal kitchens are in there?
I just went through there today. So I have gone through the property.
Just today?
Yeah, today. So very current. And the, there is one formal kitchen in the, on the premises. The other two, I think, I know one for sure has like a hot plate, just a plug-in hot plate, and I think they have a sink. It's kind of like a shared bathroom sink prep area. And then that's for the lower floor. And then the upper level, the main level, has just a basic sink, you know, kind of set up. There's no formal kitchens in the other two units. I didn't give a count to, get a direct count in terms of, I know, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly, you know, from the original plans, if there was officially a bathroom in the lower unit, but there didn't seem to be an exorbitant amount of restrooms in there, too.
There was no bathroom in the lower unit?
There was. There was a bathroom.
There was? Okay. Are they expanding or decreasing the garage at all, or is it staying the same?
The garage is expanding.
Is it expanding?
I believe 64 square feet.
So the garage is expanding, okay. One of the code enforcement things is not up here, and they were using one of the units there as a vacation rental. Did they register with the city for the bed tax?
I don't believe so. The applicant would be able to respond to you for that, but I do not believe so.
They have not registered yet. All right, thank you.
John, I actually have a question about the wording of condition seven. It's, I was a little confused. It might be a little ambiguous. It says, "Within six months of the approval of CHP 13 to 15, the building plans shall be approved for the project and identify the demolition of the interior kitchens and additional units, et cetera." The second sentence is, "If the project is not approved," the code enforcement division, et cetera. Do you mean if the building plans are not approved, or if we don't approve this CHP?
If this, if this CHP does not get approved, and, you know, they just decide to go forward with maybe just some minor interior improvements that don't require discussion or review, that would ensure that action's taken. We already have a code enforcement case open, so they're staying a long abreast of this situation, ensuring that it gets resolved. This is just kind of one more, one more thing added to the overall visibility that this is an issue that needs to get addressed.
I guess, I guess my point is that second sentence, it just seems moot, because if we don't prove this, it won't, we won't, they won't be...
That condition won't even exist.
The condition won't exist, so, okay.
So we don't need that sentence.
All right. Okay, so I wanted to go over the summary of the findings and the justification for the improvements associated with the project. One is that the project does not modify any of the character-defining features. Two is that the changes proposed are insignificant and do not alter the character of the historic house as viewed the improvements with and without. Standards nine and 10 do allow modifications to historic properties. The addition and exterior modifications are differentiated and could be removed in the future. The project does remove non-compatible awnings and brings the property into compliance with the HPPA, final HPPA improvement, and the repairs, or the project repairs deteriorated features and ensures the long-term preservation of the historic landmark. Staff and the designer review are recommending approval of the project because of the addition's location and the project's performance with the Secretary of Interior Standards.
John, is it fair to say, too, that the plans that were, you know, if we were to approve the project, that the plans that are being approved or being proposed are of a single-family house, and that there's a condition that requires, you know, compliance with the pre-existing condition of the historic home being a single-family house, and it would also resolve code enforcement case?
That's correct. And would continue the historic use of the property as a single-family residence.
Jim?
I do have an arithmetic question for you. On page two of the staff report, under the title "Project Description," that first paragraph, they talk about the square footage.
Mm-hmm.
Earlier, you say it's about a 1,600-square-foot, two-story historic house. In that paragraph, we say it's about a 2,600 square feet, so that's about a thousand square feet difference. But when you say the project adds about 300 square feet to each floor, that's 600 square feet, I'm wondering where the other 400 square feet is coming from?
I think that's from the garage. I think it uses...
So we're adding 400 square feet to the garage?
So we've got here, the existing first-floor area, just the residence, is 347 square feet. The second floor is 1,789 square feet. So the existing is 2,136 square feet.
Oh, so it's not, it's not 1,596.
I think it was 1,596 in 1948.
That was the original.
Because there's 540 that was added in 1948 or something like that.
I got it, so, okay.
My bad.
Thanks.
No, no problem.
I was confused, too.
Do we have more questions for John at this time?
Yeah, well, maybe for you. I mean, we understand we have a, the CEQA, we have an exemption here for class one and a class 32 exemption, and there's been some concern about that by, you know, an article in the paper. Could we clarify that we made the appropriate finding in as far as CEQA exemption here? Is the city attorney comfortable that the staff's determination of an exemption for class one and class 32 are appropriate for this project?
Yeah, based on the staff report and the information that John's provided, I'm comfortable with both those, and just by general background. So CEQA provides a number of exemptions. It also says that a categorical exemption can't be used for a project which may cause a substantial ad... project which may cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of a historical resource. And obviously, staff doesn't feel that this would cause that. So then we can look at the other categorical exemptions that are listed. And if we look at both ones listed in the staff report and the resolution, I think that those are proper exemptions for this project.
Thank you.
I just have one further question at this time. You talked about putting this back into a single-family residence. Was any consideration given as to the functionality of the new design whereby there's no connectivity between the second floor and the first floor?
Well, there was never, historically, there was no connectivity from the first floor and the second floor, so staff feels that it functioned as a, you know, a little extra room or a guest room or what have you. And so that would be continuing the historic use and the, there always was a lack of internal circulation, so that was deemed acceptable?
Well, thank you.
I'm sure we'll have more questions for you later in the proceedings, but thank you for now. And I see that your applicant is here. I have cards from both the applicant and the applicant's architect. Which one of you would like to come forward at this time to?
I'll come first. Hello, planning commissioners. My name is James Glover. I'm the building designer representing the Almarados Inn, and I am a longtime resident of San Clemente. I'd like to say I respect the duty of the planning commission and Historic Society to protect and fulfill the visions of the city. For that, this city's charm and beauty has, hasn't been lost. So, I mean, I definitely appreciate that. I'm kind of going to go a little bit off my thing here, because just after listening to John talk, you know, I felt he did a good job describing what we are doing to the home. And I'm not sure how you change this.
This one's forward?
This one's forward? Okay. So, within the house, as you can see right here, this is the west-facing elevation. And we were planning on removing the awnings. How do you do that? Do the pointer just, oh, there we go. Somewhere. Okay, okay. Sorry about that. Can't get that one. But on the west-facing elevation here, that we were planning on removing the awnings, I have an illustration here in circles, so it helps a little bit to describe and show what we're doing over there. So as you can see, we're going to be removing the awnings. The reason why we are enlarging those windows, at this time, that's a closet. At this time, the master bedroom has no views from it at all. And we're looking at a place that has the most prime views are at that location. So by opening these windows just a little bit allows for views. The windows are so small now that you cannot see out of them. So just open them eight inches allows for the glass to get opened up. Because right now, if you take a twelve-inch window and you take all the sash and you take glass, you only have about six to seven inches of glass in there. So by, we just, we were trying to be as sensitive as possible when we opened these windows up. We really examined this as close as we can to try to keep this existing house, to stay with its existing vernacular. And so by doing that, we felt by opening those windows up just eight inches allowed for us to be sensitive to the building, to keep it to its, you know, state that it is now with the minor modification to that, to allow them to be able to have some view out of that area. Also, that room's very dark. There's no windows in it. You just have the one area. So, and, and with the house, they're trying to update the house in the interior. They're going to keep it with a Spanish colonial theme, but they're trying to update it so that it becomes a very livable house for them. They plan on, this is their, going to be their main residence. And so by adding those windows helps that space. On the lower floor, where we're doing the French doors, those doors are there for multiple reasons. Tom does work out of his house, they work out of their house. And that's really kind of a guest room for their children when they come down, and it's also an office that he's going to be doing, he's going to be doing his work. And with that area, we have this brand-new patio, as you can see on the landscape plan, that these are French doors we're going to open out to. And so we wanted to add the French doors to create that additional light and ventilation, but we also are planning on having those French doors open out into the patio. So while he's working there, he could enjoy the wonderful view, the ocean air. You know, these are some of the things that Ole Hanson's was looking at, and on the design of the, of the city, was based upon these wonder ocean views. So as for that area, that's why we had, did these modifications on that. And we really feel that they're very minor modifications to the project, and I think they enhance this project. They give this project a lot longer life than it has right now. The house is dilapidated right now. You know, so we're planning on, you know, refinishing the wood, refinishing the windows. All of them will be to the original colors. I'm sorry that we did not clearly identify the colorations on the, our visualization, but all the colorations of the windows, of the terracotta-colored red, the dark kind of Oxford brown wood colors would be on the building. So we're going to maintain all that. And so I'm going to just go back to the, right here is the other, the north-facing elevation. And we're taking a look at north elevation. Again, we're really trying to be sensitive with this. But at the same time, is those little windows definitely don't create enough light and ventilation for the master bedroom. And not only that, is from that side view, we're going to be landscaping that side elevation. And so we're trying to create more light in there. As you come in from the hallway into the bedroom, you can look out this, I wish I could do the pointer here, but if you take a look at the window closest to the balcony there, that window has really great views from it. So as you walk through the, into the bedroom, you'll be able to get a glimpse of this view. This is what this property is about. This is what City of San Clemente is about, is views. So we really feel that window's very important. And again, as you walk over to where you see the balcony with the French doors, or with a single French door, the idea of that balcony there is, is the same thing. They're going to have this, they have this beautiful side yard that's going to be landscaped. They want to create seating areas, an area that they could really enjoy the property. This is a great area that they could see the pier, the fireworks. And so they really want to be able to have a little, that little balcony really creates this great area. It's for them to go stand out and view their yard and the pier and ocean views. So that's why we feel it's very, very important and to create for the longevity of this building is to be able to have those, those windows, that window and that door on this side. We really have been trying, you know, it's a really hard line for us because we want to make this feel authentic to the style as possible. And we kind of have to draw, have this, we have this kind of scale factor when we're designing, is that we, we have to detach it a little bit. And it's very difficult for us because we want to actually, you know, tie it together so it does look original. So, I mean, it's been hard for us, you know, to work that, those issues out, just as you guys have discussed. But we feel that we've done a really good job that really creates a great elevation on this home. We feel that it, although it ties in with the project, it still has some differential factors that separate it from the other part of the house. I'm going to flip through this a little bit. So we have right here, you can see the orange highlights or the red highlights around those areas that we've changed. I did not realize that John is going to do such a good job describing everything, so I thought I was going to have to do it more. So I'm outbuilding right now, so. But I really appreciate the time you're allowing me to do this. So this is just kind of another elevation. This is one of the southwest elevation. And we basically wanted to really show here by looking at the two elevations, we tried to do this as realistic as possible. We spent a lot of time on these visualizations. To be able to show that, that when you really look at this building, it has very little, those increases on the wood have very little impact on the design. We still are capturing the original intent for this building and the original feeling that this building has. I'm just going to move again. There's the awning moving from there. Now, on this new proposed, or the, the new proposed south elevation in existing, this is where we feel we're doing the most minimal modifications. Now, on this elevation, there's the existing bay window. I have to be honest and say that I actually like the original nineteen forty addition on it. I love the colors and textures of that bay window. We've changed it because one of the requirements that the Almarados had at that time was that they had a stucco. I don't agree with that. I actually think that when you, and I thought that John had a great visual, and if I knew that was going to be a discussion like that, I would have had a visual like that, too. I actually like the texture of the wood as you enter into the home on that existing bay window. It's a really unusual bay window. It has a very squared-off eve detail that's boxed in about this far, and then it has a stucco bay in it. Very, very, if you stucco it and you leave it in the actual bay, it's going to be really cloggy or clunky-looking. So that's why we squared it off, is because we felt that it actually felt more, it felt more natural with the way the roof system and the soffit they have on there. So that's the only reason why we did square it off. If it was me, if it was my home, and I was able to do what I would want to do, I actually agree with Larry Culberson in the article that he had, is that that bay window should stay. And I agree. I think it's a really nice element on the project. And I actually like the color change and the wood. We'd want to definitely refinish it and clean it up. Now, on the other hand, is on the double pair of doors that we have on that elevation, is there's multiple reasons why we're doing that. You know, we were always under the impression that because of it being a remodel, even though it was done in nineteen forty-eight, that we had a little bit more leeway in some of the revisions that we do with that, because it's really not part of the original historic building. So we have a big family room. If you take a look at the house as it was existing, it was divided up into multiple spaces. The upstairs now is all one big space. We've removed the kitchen to the backside, created a really nice family room for them, and where the bay window is a nice dining room, and then the front is the living room. So out of the family room, they have this great little covered patio area. And with the single door, we don't quite get the feeling of opening it up to that area, which really allows for great, allows for, we have such wonderful temper climate here in San Clemente, having those doors open and brings interior of the space to the, and exterior space together. And by having the double French doors there, having them opened out, having a little eating area out there, a little seating area, really opens up the plan, which really makes this wonderful space. And so we really would like to keep that in mind, and we'd really like to maintain that space. In fact, we'd like to keep everything that we have on the plan as much as we possibly can, because we really feel that not only are we, we are trying to keep up with the richer, the original vernacular of the building, but we're actually doing improvements that make this building last another sixty years. And that would be our goal, so that the Almarados and they could pass it on to their children and that they could enjoy this, this home and bring it up to the interiors, up to the standards of today's living. And that, that is our goal and aspirations for this project. And we're really hoping, I'm going to go back on script here, so, because I have a little closely thinking as I was going through. But, you know, yeah, this has been, as you can understand, this is very confusing for Almarados and it is for us, this whole process that we've gone through. And I think some of you know the process that we've gone, and we've really tried to be upfront and up forward with this project the whole time. So we felt, working with John, has been wonderful. Jim Petches and everybody else in the city, the engineering department, everybody we're both working with, they've been very, very helpful, assisting us and doing everything that we need to do so that we can provide you with the proper information and try to get as much of the proper information. It is, unfortunately, it is pretty muddled. You know, it is very difficult as a designer or homeowner to really get clear, a clear picture of what really we can do and can't do. And so that's something that we try to do, working with the planners in this process, is be able to get more clarity to what we can do. And that's how we came up with this design. And this design was, you know, we've never been settled. We've been working closely with them this whole time. It's been about a nine-month process that we've been going through. So we appreciate the time that you guys are giving me to be able to spend. And we're really hoping that you'll be able to look at all this and be able to approve what the staff report has recommended for approval. And the biggest thing that we want to do is, we just want to make sure that, we should not be subject, we should take off the subjectiveness, because that can muddle our decisions. That's all I want to do. I just want to make sure that we be objective about this. We really take a look at it. And I want to thank you very much for the time. And like I said, I got a little confused here because I kind of went off. I had this whole plan, so I got a little nervous here.
You adapted just fine.
I get it.
Before Mr. Glover sits down, are there any questions for him? No. All right, great. Thank you, Jim. Oh, I'm sorry. Don, were you?
Uh, no. So the staff's very beneficial as far as your feedback in the last nine months. Who else, you got feedback early on from others and all that?
Well, you know, we, you know, I met with, I saw Michael Kelp on the project when we first, before we started the project. And Mike was very professional and worked with us. He didn't give us any advice or anything. He just walked the project with us. And he, he took a look at it, and, you know, he was very pleased that someone was going to take on this project and get it fixed up. We've talked, I've met with John and Jim several times. We've discussed the project. We started this project with them very early on. When we first, we met with them first before we even put pen ink. You know, we do these drawings like this. We have several revisions, and unfortunately, we keep on editing over them. But as we have done this, we've, we've brought sketches to them and showed them things that we're doing. So we have, they've been involved in this project all the way through. And like I said, we, we've enjoyed working with them, and we've always have. And it's very important for us, our firm, is to work very closely with the planner, planners on a project so that we could kind of overcome obstacles. So we really have pride all the way through to be able to design a building that not only would satisfy the city's needs, the Historic Society's needs, but the community. We really want to be sensitive to this building, and we really feel that we've accomplished this with this project.
Does that answer your question, Don? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So, let's see, we have, the, the applicants themselves would like to speak, but since Jim has taken the ten minutes, it'd be appropriate for you to speak during the public hearing process, and you'll have three minutes at that time. So I'll open the public hearing, and I have two cards. I'm sorry, three cards, including yours. First, Larry Culberson. Next, Julie Zipush. And, and then Jill and Tom Almarado, please.
Good evening, Commissioner. Larry Culberson, resident, president of the San Clemente Historical Society. I kind of feel like David going against Goliath here. I'm happy that this project got scaled back and that that push out of the lower part under the balcony, that that was eliminated. And I'm happy that the so-called enclosed balcony is going to stay where it was. But nevertheless, this project is bad for historic preservation in San Clemente, yet it's being supported by the city staff and the Cultural Heritage Commission. I've painstakingly explained to staff and to Cultural Heritage how this project does not even come close to complying with the city design guidelines, the Secretary of Interior Standards, and the California Environmental Quality Act. But for some reason, they're determined to approve it. On page four of your report, I hope you all had a chance to read the letter, that couple, several letters that I've sent to you, and have attended all the hearings and spoken about this project. But I'd like to just reiterate a couple of points that I made on the, on the letter. On page four of your report, staff attempts to explain how this project complies with the required findings. Number two, claims that the addition would not be visible from the public right of way. You've all stood at the intersection of Victoria and Casador, so you know that the addition would be extremely visible. Number three, staff keeps referring to the nonhistoric addition to justify its modification. My letter to you explained how that nineteen forty-eighth addition is now sixty-six years old and has become historic in its own right as provided for in the Secretary Standards. Number four, the kitchen projection has also become historic by the same sixty-six-year passage. Number five, the Juliet balcony should not be allowed just because it's not on a primary facade. The standards do not say it is okay to add a new character-defining feature anywhere. The balcony would be an extremely, extremely visible from Avenue to Victoria. Enlarging the, the windows on the enclosed balcony would be demolition of a character-defining feature on a primary facade. Staff's justification that it would be okay because the new ones would be the same design is contrary to rehabilitation standards. I might also say that it's paving the way for the next person who wants to do I might also say that it's paving the way for the next person who wants to do an addition to say, well, that's a nonhistoric window. Why don't we put a monster window in there? Number seven, staff does not adequately explain, to my understanding, how the additions would be differentiated from the historic portions of the building. I've also pointed out to you on several occasions that modifications to historic buildings that our city has approved in the past have resulted in, in their historic integrity rating being decreased. This project has the potential for severely damaging the historic integrity of one of our most important buildings, and for that reason, it's my opinion that we must get an independent, get the opinion of an independent historic preservation specialist. But I might say one final thing. I was rather shocked that Mr. Glover talked about the dilapidated condition of the building. Where was planning? I mean, that, that building's been under HPPA for the past 15 years. They're supposed to be doing inspections. The owners have been getting a huge property tax reduction. Why is it dilapidated? Somebody has failed. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And by the way, I was remiss, and I didn't acknowledge that we received two forms of written communication here at the dais, one from Larry Culberson and one from the applicants as well. Okay, so Julie, you're next.
I'm Julie Amorado, Zipush, and my parents were so excited about this house in San Clemente. They would bring my husband and me down here before they brought, before they bought the house to get their, to get our blessing. I can't tell you how many times, day and night, we would drive by to, to validate what they were about to put an offer on. They spent a lot of time in soul-searching, making sure this was the right decision to put the retirement money into their dream retirement home. My mom, especially knowing the community of San Clemente treasures the Christmas holiday season, was so excited about the prospect of decorating that house for the, for the holidays, especially Christmas. She said the community would drive by in droves to see her creation. Growing up, growing up, Christmas was very special to our family. My mom has a love and excitement for decorating for all seasons, not just Christmas. Our neighbors and friends would, couldn't wait to see what she would come up with next. Picture yourself at Disneyland each holiday. Well, that's my mom. Her decorations would challenge Disney's tastefully done. In fact, she wins holiday Christmas decoration contest. My mom told me that a lady from the Historical Society wanted to use the house at Christmas for a tour. Mom was honored and eager to share. Mom was so proud to share her vision with this lady. She thought that this next Christmas, she would have the Christmas tour and open house. I keep asking, are we going to have Christmas there next year? I quit, I quit asking, because I only hear frustration, anger, hurt, and concern that they may have made the wrong decision in buying the house. I still want to share my mom's vision when they discover what they thought was their dream property. With this San Clemente house, I envision an old-fashioned Christmas theme, very tastefully done. As people and tours come around the corner, they would hear the music from an 1800s player piano playing old-fashioned 1920s Christmas songs coming from this beautiful historic Spanish home. The sight and sound from a miniature Holiday Express train would add an enchanting allure, as people walk or drive by, they would see family, friends, and neighbors enjoying an old-fashioned get-together in the den as they rounded the corner. Twinkling lights adorning, adorning the exterior would invite them to explore the Yuletide fairyland. The spell of this, the smell of the scent of Christmas would flow out the windows. Continuing, continuing around the corner, they would see a gorgeous spinning old-fashioned Christmas tree just behind the charming Juliet balcony windows. Continuing down and around toward Victoria Avenue, you would look up and see that romantic wooden balcony. It would be an eye-catching display, attractively adorned with an old-fashioned red ribbon garland. I hate to see my parents, who were so excited about this house, become so stressful. Their excitement has turned into so much stress and heartache to the point of them saying, it's not worth it. It's hard to see my parents, a couple of schoolteachers, work so hard to accomplish what they have worked, worked so hard for, go through what they are with this house at this point in their lives. Mom and Dad, maybe you should sell it. And if that's the case, God bless the new owners.
Thank you, Julie. And now Jill and Tom Amorado.
It, it has been really stressful, and there has been accusations thrown at us. When we bought this house, if you see in the packet, it says there's an MLS listing, and on the MLS listing, and we've been accused of converting that. We had nothing to do with its conversions on this house. This has been in code violation probably for six or seven years, because the people before us had that done. And in the MLS, it says it has a separate studio apartment, and that's in the MLS, and it says it has three separate units, and so give the owner, give the, the owner plenty of time to give the tenants, so that we can come and look at it. So that proves that the accusations by our neighbors are not true. We did not put those people in there. There was a three-month period where I didn't know anything about VRBO, but a neighbor told me about VRBO, because the lady that was in there when we bought it got sick, and so it was empty, and I thought, well, that's probably a good idea. I've never done VRBO, but I looked into it, and I got the cheapest little thing, but nobody really wanted just a little room. So, and then it was brought up that that was violation, so it's not on there. It was on there from October, November, and part of December. And, and I don't know anything about VRBO and your rules in San Clemente for bed taxes or anything like that, and that's not my intent, and it was not our intent to put a staircase up so that we can have a unit, but we were being accused of doing that. And the lower unit, my son's going to live down there, and then we're going to have an office down there. And I'm just really disappointed in the Historic Society, because we reached out to them, and when we were in there, we, we had a sketch, and then there was some suggestions made, and maybe, you know, the box could be a balcony across, stuff like that. And so we were sort of encouraged. We were still in escrow, and then we thought, well, this is encouraging, you know, because we can make changes, and had no idea that this, all this stuff, because I don't know all this lingo that you're talking about, but I don't know if I would have done this. Again, I love that house, but the, this is where I wanted to be in there last Christmas, and I am not, I am not, I'm not going to put all this money, and all our retirement money into a house that I'm going to rent out. Sorry, neighbors, that you're terribly wrong about that. This is not something that I'm doing for, for anything but wanting to live in, in this town, that I'm not feeling so, such warm and fuzzy feelings about. And it's, I'm not, it's just a couple of people. And then I see these articles about, about embellished words, and it trampled, trampled, and we, and it's politicizing this thing, and we don't have the opportunity or the forum to, to express that, what, what we want. You know, what, what, that, it's really not this huge, massive, this little, beautiful little house that's going to become some darn castle or something. That's how it stands in these articles. And I don't know, I just, I just really am disappointed, and I, I think the Historic Society has this unite, the people who love preservation, and I really totally agree with that, but I don't feel so united with them. I really don't. I mean, I think we need to work together. I, I, and I don't think it's the whole Historic Society, I, I haven't heard from any of them, but, 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 you know, I don't know. I don't know what they're thinking. I don't know, I don't, I don't know anymore. I just...
Mrs. Amorado, I'm so sorry, but...
I know my time's up.
Don, did you have a question? Did you have a question, Kathy?
I don't have a question. Can I, I just want to make a comment to you. None of us thought that you put the tenants in there. It wasn't even on our radar that there was tenants there until I think this came before us in December. Is that when it...
In December, yeah.
We saw it in December, so it's only been since December, and we just wanted it brought into compliance, but we weren't, we, none of us think that you did that. We realized that it was on the multiple listing, we saw it, so I'm still bad...
It's just the letter that, that came from the neighbor, that just, it was so scathingly wrong, and, you know, I have really good relationships with my neighbors, and this just isn't, isn't feeling so good to me right now. You know, the things that are said, without the courtesy to just come to me. Just come to me. Larry, come to me. Neighbors, come to me. I, you know, come on. We, we gotta get, we ought to, I don't know.
I think what she's trying to say is that we, we reached out to the Historical Society before we even bought the property, but the property was in escrow. And we, we heard that this process was going to take a while, five to six months, and now we're going into 15 months. And when we were at the meeting with the Historical Society, there were some suggestions, maybe we gave them a couple of sketches that we had, we had drawn on, on an envelope or, or on a piece of paper, because we weren't even sure we were going to do any of this. And the suggestions were encouraging. So we did, then we went to the city, and we talked to John. John was very nice and, and helpful, and, and so with, with all this encouragement that we, we received, we went ahead and bought the property. And the, the reason we hired James Glover is because the Historical Society recommended to us to hire a expert. And so we did, we hired Jim. And Jim did a great job, and most of my comments are in this paper that's in your, your folder, but the original plan was beautiful. And you know what? I don't know, I, I don't know all the, the, the rules and so forth, of guidelines and so forth, but I do, I read Ole Hansen's inspiration of, of this dream that he had as a village by the sea, a Spanish village, and I don't see anything that we've designed, that Jim designed, or we designed. We, we, we read those, we read that an outside stairway, for example, was permissible. So we added one to enhance the beauty of the building and functionality of the building also. And it just seems, you know, I, I'm really confused, because I, I read, maybe I'm not interpreting it properly, but it, it seems to me that Ole Hansen wants, he says, he has this vision of hundreds of homes, white wall, red tile, hibiscus, palms, so forth, and that's what we want.
Don, did you have a question for Mr. Amorado?
Just, you know, who, did you meet with the preservation committee that they have at the, at the Historical Society? Was there...
Now, Larry, at this house with the...
They're having a meeting, and they, they allowed us, they allowed us a few minutes of time for the meeting to start, and it was, I believe it was nine people there, including Mr. Culberson.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you both very much. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak to this matter?
Yes, I'm...
Georgia?
Hi.
Oh, I beg your pardon, I didn't, I didn't see it. Eileen?
Yeah, I'm kind of on the fly with all this, I've just come out of the flu.
Oh.
First of all, I think we need to change our name to the San Clemente Historic Society, because everybody, including the city, now refers to us in that way. It's not our name, but maybe we ought to go that way. There's a few things I'd like to clarify. I was the president at the time that they came by, and I would like to begin by saying that the Amoretos are lovely people. We welcome them into our city as new owners of a historic resource. We welcome them. So, you know, we're very happy when somebody buys one of our Ole Hansen homes. We're very happy when somebody joins us in loving the city the way we all do. So, you know, I have to clarify that. They came to our meeting, I was the president, I loved both of them, I thought they were just darling. I had nothing to go by, I'm, I can only speak for myself, but it was the entire board. They had a napkin or something, they had drawn a little sketch that they drew. You can't tell anything from that. And they, they were talking about nonoriginal features, and we believed them, that they were talking about nonoriginal features. Well, once they hired Mr. Glover, and they had plans, and we had something concrete to look at, we realized that in fact, that closet is original. We have a picture where there was lime on the streets, it was so new, and that was there, back in 1926 or whenever it was. So to say that, you know, that we embraced the plan, and that we were, that we're now being cutthroat about it, that is just not true. I, I want to be fair about it, and I'm being honest about it. We just did the best we could, and we welcomed them, as I do now. We just said, that's wonderful, we're so happy that you're buying that house. We wish you every luck. Then when we saw the plans, and we started to have some issues, and I agree with Larry, they backed off of a lot of things that were kind of devastating, and, including getting rid of that original closet from the main elevation. We're very grateful for that. There are still some changes. I have not read Larry's article, so I don't even know exactly what you've said, Larry, but I'm sure, you know, he's our president, so what he says is very important. So I haven't read it. I agree with Mr. Glover, I like that bay window a whole lot better than what they have in their plan. I like the original, I think it fits, it looks beautiful, it's charming, so I would agree with that. Let's see. What else do I have here? I agree, no sidewalks. I, I just think that's ridiculous. Get rid of those walls and put in, oh, I want to talk about Pasadena Court, the area, Pasadena Colony. It's one of our most prestigious areas in the city. It is San Clemente history at its best. We had a famous poet that was in the home at Casa Elena, I gave a tour of that area recently. The Barto mansion had the founder in his shoes. We had Gloria Swanson, that, you know, I won't go into it, but she used to go down there, too. She went to their home. Pop Warner, right next door, founder of the baseball, or football. Anyway, I think, I think that maybe if you guys are uncomfortable with some of these changes, Larry's suggestion about an independent advisor on it, maybe, but I think that they have backed off of some of the more serious changes they made. I think they're lovely people. I think we need to clarify that the Historical Society, or the Historic Society, is no one's enemy. We're doing, can we stop this for just a second?
I think it does it automatically. Can you stop it, Eileen?
We're doing exactly what the San Clemente Historical Society is entrusted to do by the state of California. And if you think it's easy, standing up here and locking horns with, not with these lovely people, but with Big John developers, it's not. You pay a price personally. You get battle worn, you know, you just get kind of defeated after a while. We're doing exactly what it is we're supposed to do. And my nine years with this group, gosh, what an education it's been. I know so much about historic preservation that I probably don't need, unless I'm in this arena. But anyway, I'm up here to try to throw whatever clarity on it that I can, and to assure the Amoretos that we are not your enemies, we welcome you, and we've just been trying to make it win-win, so that the community, this is a very important house. We treasure it, and, you know, and we want you to treasure it. So we're just doing what we're supposed to do.
Georgia, I think Don has a question.
Do you have written processes and procedures within your preservation committee, internally, that when you see these plans come out, that your committee, that I see on your website, get together and evaluate these?
We never saw any plans. That's what I'm telling you.
Or eventually, somebody saw some plans, and you can run them.
Eventually...
So what's your, do you have a written process or procedure or checklist that you use?
Once we saw the plans, we met, we looked at the plans, and, and we arrived over here, and so did the Amoretos, and so did Mr. Glover, and, and we pointed out, because then we had something concrete that we could look at.
Do you have training on this? Do you have a, do you have, do you take training, or have go-to courses to make sure that everything is, that you're up to speed on all these, these areas?
One moment. Once we looked at that closet, and we realized what they were going to do, we could point out to the city. We enlightened Mr. Champa that that was original. He was believing that that wasn't original. We did what we're supposed to do. We pointed out what was original and what wasn't original.
Okay, thank you.
We did what we could. And if you're talking about a formal process, we're not design review, we wish we were. We would love to have a seat there. But what we did do is we gave it close scrutiny, we gave it the best that we have, and we try to be as fair as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia, and I, I hope you get better. I know you couldn't take a flu shot, so I'm sorry that it finally got you.
Yeah, I told you, I didn't have the flu shot, I was bragging about it, and I got the flu. That's what you get.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one, step forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. And just a point of clarification before we begin our discussion. Jim, there's been discussion about the, the bay window... Jim, there's been discussion about the bay window, retaining that bay window despite the fact that the HPPA calls for its replacement. Is that within our purview? Are we allowed to do that? Or do they need to amend their HPPA application? Or would that HPPA application need to be amended?
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I was gonna say, I'd just see the...
Yeah, there you go.
We'd like this first.
Okay.
Well, first of all, they'd be obligated to either comply with the requirement in the HPPA, or we could always amend the HPPA if we determine that it wasn't the best thing to do. So if the planning commission, you know, agrees with some of the comments tonight and wants to direct us to, you know, take this to City Council for consideration for an amendment, we can do that. But there is some flexibility here if we were to, if there was some information out there that the Historical Society or somebody might have which says that, it says this, let me just read it. "Removal of the wood soffit and replacement of the wood siding with white stucco to match the rest of the structure at the bay window on the west elevation," that's the requirement. But then it says, "To the extent feasible, the elements should be restored to its original appearance in accordance with any documentation from the period of the home's initial construction era." So if we have some kind of photographic evidence that this was, you know, an original feature, then we think it would be okay to keep it the way it is from the way this is written. But that's unclear because it says the original construction period, which is 1928, and this seems like it's probably an addition in the 1940s. So my recommendation is if you'd like to, you know, you agree with Jim Glover's, you know, assessment, and I think Larry's too, that the character of that wood feature is something that should be retained, I'd just add a recommendation and the conditions of approval that the staff research it if it isn't an original feature, direct staff to work with the applicant to amend the contract to allow the feature to be retained.
And Jim, that's not a, that bay window is not an SCR feature, correct? Whether it was original or not, that's not like...
Well, no, actually there are some classic, you know, bay-type window features in Spanish Colonial Revival that are all wood. You'll see that on...
There are, okay.
There are. I don't, can't think of any of, Jim, can you think of any in town? I know there are some I've seen before in Santa Barbara.
Yes, Santa Barbara. Santa Barbara.
Yeah.
Mariposa, the apple.
So what's the...
Ole Hansen's, Mariposa, Mariposa.
Okay, there you go.
Don, do you have a question?
Here's, well, here's a timeline fence issue that might be a concern when we do this, is condition seven says that within six months of approval of the cultural heritage permit, demolition's gonna start for interior kitchens, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. And so now you've got a city council timeline here, so the clock starts running 180 days from today, based on condition number seven, that's in the report now. So I don't know if you can pull, you know, can you get it all the way on the council agenda while they're moving on to try to get this thing changed?
Well, the demolition of the kitchen wouldn't affect, what would happen is they'd either be able to, they'd either have to comply with, they'd either have to comply with this condition right here that, you know, requires the bay window to be changed to more of a Spanish look, in the opinion of this determination back in whatever year it was. Or they'll have, they can change it if we get it amended. That has nothing to do with the demolition of the interior of the building, they can continue to go forward with that.
They just want to make sure that, you know, what you're trying to do here...
That won't slow down the demolition or compliance with that. That's something they could do right away without even proceeding with any of the other improvements in the building. And we could get that fairly quickly because it wouldn't require, you know, a design review or anything else. We already have the direction of the planning commission, if that's what you decide to do, we go right to the city council in the first available meeting that we can get in on. So it'll be a matter of...
So there wouldn't be a delay for them?
A month and a half or something like that.
Okay. Jim, did you have a question? Okay.
Wayne?
I just have one. It appears that this particular requirement on their Mills Act somehow slipped through. When I was in the city council, we were always assured that you guys were up to date on all of the requirements for all the Mills Act for the individual homes. I guess this just slipped through and...
I think I can respond to that.
I contacted the previous owner a number of times and was working with them. They were wanting to keep it. And there were some lags in the time in our discussions in her getting the application, going through it, you know, kind of having to re-approach her again and again on getting this issue addressed. And there were some time gaps. And so the property, you know, that improvement never got amended because she never came forward and we were approaching her. And so we never came forward with the official, you know, penalty associated with the twelve and a half percent with that. But we were continuing to try and work with them on getting that amended. And it just, you know, with, when the new property, because I was under, aware that the property was gonna be sold when the Almarados came in, that was one of the first things that I told them, is that if you're gonna do anything, make sure that you include this improvement as part of your project scope, because this is something that's delinquent, we need to get this addressed. So they're aware of that through the process.
Thank you, John. Okay. Any other questions or would someone like to begin discussion? Did I, I didn't close the public hearing? Yes, I did. Did I close? Yeah. But thank you, I appreciate it. Kathy?
I have some...
Or Commissioner Ward, which I can now say.
Yes, thank you. Yes. I would like to read something into the record, and I'm just stating it for the record. This is a historic Ole Hansen house that is also designated as a landmark house and described in the Historic Resources Inventory dated 1995 as "a generously sized one- and two-story residence in the Spanish colonial revival style. The property is in good condition and contributes to a cluster of three impressive Spanish village residences at the west end of Casador Lane. For its contribution to the Spanish village, its individual architectural quality and its notable location, 418 Casador Lane appears to be eligible for individual and district listing in the National Register. The property at this time, 1995, is recommended for retention on the historical structures list. The update of this inventory in 2006 states, "This residence is an outstanding example of the Spanish colonial revival style in San Clemente. It appears eligible for the National Register as a contributor to a potential historic district under criterion A for its association with the Ole Hansen Spanish Village by the Sea period 1925 to 1936, and under criterion C for its exemplary interpretation of the Spanish colonial revival style. Its status code listing at this time is a 3D. I am of the opinion that in order for this home to continue its present status and not endanger its own historical significance, or that of the two landmark homes adjacent to it, which is one of the findings we must make, that this is not interest to the other properties, we must adhere to the most stringent standards set by the Secretary of the Interior, Ansequa, on the rehabilitation and additions to the historic property." Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay. Didn't want to jump in this early, but I think the easiest decision, whenever we get one of these things, is to do nothing. And so we don't want any changes, but that's not why we're here. We're here to make the tough decisions, make a fair and balanced decision that respects the historic significance as well as the owner's rights. And I think that's very important. The one thing I'd like Larry's proposal, and we haven't acted on it yet, of making sure whenever we do changes that it doesn't change the historic integrity rating, and I think he's got a steady session hopefully scheduled, so we can work on that. I think you requested it at one time. And I want to also say that as we go through these design processes, everybody does have a seat on the design review because it is a public meeting, it's not a decision-making body, and everybody who wants to come speak at it can speak at it and are invited to do I think the sidewalk, Jim indicated, by code we do need to put it in where it is required or where it's possible to put it. And if there's a position that people want to take it out, we could probably have that addressed at the same time as possibly the bay window issue with city council and the I think the project is in fact sensitive to the neighborhood, I don't believe it affects the character. The only thing I'm a little uncomfortable with is actually the one door we didn't talk about down on the first floor underneath the balcony, but that's something that can be returned back to its normal look. I was never, and this isn't about what we like or dislike, this is really what's put in front of us and we're supposed to evaluate how it complies. I can make the findings in support of the project. I don't like every little aspect, I really didn't like the covered porch being filled in even though it was historic, but an argument can be made both ways and one I don't think is any more correct than the other. So I'll keep this short because I think we're gonna have so many comments, but I could support the project as presented.
Okay, thank you, Bart. Jim?
I probably voted in the minority to, against approving a lot of, probably more of these historic changes, or what I would consider nonhistoric changes, probably more than anyone else at the planning commission over the last couple of years. Looking at this, I am glad that the features have changed from when we first saw this in December. I would have had, you know, it was almost like a no-brainer at that time for me, it just seemed like the extra staircase and such was a real problem and a real change. I'm very, very happy to see the changes that the owners and the architects made. I think you've really made a big effort to try and be appropriate to the space. When I look at that, the newer portion of the building, 1948 portion, you know, that is, from a, I think from a legal perspective, you know, or historic, the formal perspective, we can't really consider that historic. I think in my mind it is, in a lot of people's minds and hearts it is, but it hasn't been looked at from a professional point of view. We can't sort of use that, leverage that as a finding to say, "Oh, well, that's historic, so we can't make changes to it." We first have to have it assessed and have some, I think, some historic architect look at it and make that kind of assessment and provide some kind of professional opinions. With the, so the changes with there, I'm okay with the changes with there, with that, on that part, part of the building. The bay windows, I could go either way with that. I'm actually, you know, if city council wants to change it, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I also don't have a problem with kind of restoring it. It's probably impossible to prove that the bay windows are not historic, so, you know, trying to prove that negative. So keep in mind, those might be, I think is fine with me. I'm with Bart on the new doors, I, you know, that, we didn't talk much about that, but, you know, adding new doors and windows, as we talked about, I think with the, with the Ole Hansen Beach Club, you know, that's where I start to get a little shaky and nervous because it starts to change some of the flow of the building. But it is reversible and I think it's more, it's more kind of appropriate than what we've seen in some other structures. And actually, one of my biggest concerns was the Juliet balcony on the north elevation. It is the elevation you're gonna see the least except for the back elevation, but only half the cars are gonna see that elevation versus the other two elevations. The cars and passerby's are gonna be sort of really facing those. So it is a, it is a minor elevation as compared to the other two, although it's still fairly visible. It actually improves the face of the elevation and improves it aesthetically. But, and usually when we look at something, that's one of our main criteria, but it's really a secondary criteria when we're looking at a historic building, because we really have to say, is that a feature that's gonna be a problem? And it's, you know, I struggle with that one, but in the end, I look at it in context with the rest of the building, and I say, "You know what? It doesn't really change the nature or the statement that the building is making." So I can, I can go with the Juliet balcony, you know, although it's, I'm really, really on the edge about that. You know, Larry in the past has brought up, rightfully so, the size of the additions that we have made. I've had a, you know, big problem and voted against some of these CHPs in the past because of, partly because of the size. But this one is, I think, almost entirely hidden in the back. I don't think it adds to the mass of the building from any reasonable viewing angle. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of approving the permit. I think, like I said, there are some things that I, that kind of worry me, but, you know, looking at it overall, I think that it works, I think that it fits, I think it's gonna be an improvement and a contribution to the neighborhood.
Wayne?
When I first came to San Clemente, actually just before I moved here in 1983, this was the first house I looked at because it was for sale. And they wanted $340,000 for it. I went, "Oh, way too much," at that time. But it was the first house that I looked at when coming here. I was on, in the, and Jim will remember this, but in the 90s, and probably mid-'90s, I would imagine, Ray LaForest, who's no longer with us, and myself attended a Mills Act conference in Escondido. And we brought back some information and Jim took it under his wing immediately and started to, and even before that, started to really consider the Mills Act for San Clemente. And so I've been very much involved with the Mills Act for a long, long time. This is always a matter of interpretation. I'm very much of a purist when it comes to historic homes and very much of a purist when it comes to landmark homes. I think a lot of the problems initially for the owners was that they, there was, there was not the transparency perhaps of either from the city or from anyone with regard to how the home was being used. And I think that caused a lot of difficulties here in San Clemente and in the neighborhood. A lot of the neighbors were very upset about it being a three-unit. They were concerned, obviously, about vacation rental. When it was checked into, we found that the owners had not registered with the city for the business tax for that. And so it was, it was rough going because there was, there was a lack of, I think, forthrightness amongst a lot, including the city at that point, about this, because I don't think the city was, I mean, it was up to the neighbors at that point to bring forth that in fact was being used as a triplex. But this is a matter of interpretation. This is one of the most important landmark homes in San Clemente. I'm not gonna be supportive of it for the simple reason that, and I'm gonna be basing it upon my findings, although I'm gonna be reading something to the record with regard to what we had talked about before. But as far as the findings are concerned, I'm, well, first of all, I'm concerned about the sidewalk. We don't need a sidewalk there. There's a sidewalk across the street, and we don't have enough room for a sidewalk there. I could go either way with the bay window. It doesn't make any difference to me really, because it was an addition in the '40s. I do have a concern with the Juliet balcony. I do have a concern with the window, and I've read that with the Interior Secretary's standards with regard to windows and doors. And so I do have concerns with regard to that. One of my biggest concerns, though, is the, is the addition back there, the roof line that is, you can actually see that from the public right of way. The staff report said it was not visible from the public right of way. It is visible from the public right of way. And this is a highly pedestrian street, even though it's a steep street, people walk up that street and down that street every day. And so people will see the addition there. I do have a problem with the roof line there. I would, even I'm not gonna be supportive, if in fact the majority is gonna be supportive of this, I won't be supportive of it, but I would like to add a condition that the applicant does register for vacation rentals and pays the back, bed tax for that. I think that's, that's something that they should, that they should do. I think that's, that's something that they should, that they should do. But I'm also going to recommend that the city council evaluate the applications based upon the Secretary of Interior Standards and for landmark standards. And also recommend that the city council really take a look at applications that are not in compliance with our laws and regulations. Just, "Applications shall not be considered if the project complies with all applicable codes, ordinances, and statutes, including but not limited to the zoning ordinance," and I like to have that in the record. I really feel that before applications are ever considered, that the applicants should be in conformance with all of those. I think that's just a matter of fairness at the very beginning. But, you know, the Mills Act was there for a very simple reason, to really retain the historic, and preserve the historic features of a home. The Mills Act provides for tremendous tax relief for people. In this case, it's substantial, maybe paying around $16,000 a year, but that's not the point of this, of this really discussion here, but I think it's important to mention these things.
John?
Yeah, in preparation for this, I got back into the California Office of Historic Preservation website and went through about two or three courses that are available there for view and the public. We are required to have historic training every year, and so it's a wealth of knowledge. I don't know, Larry, if you'd have, if you'd be over busy, that site is quite good. There's some parts there on the interpretation of Secretary Interior Standards that you should not look at, because Jane will have to take you to the emergency room to reach your blood pressure down, I think, but there are, there are flexibilities in interpretation of standards of many of these things that I studied for, for this tonight. We do have a new general plan, which I think allows for single sidewalks on the streets that maybe could be interpreted to, in fact, say, "Okay, the municipal code says this, but it's soon going to be changed, because we just approved that general plan." And it specifically states that, that you can have with neighborhood concurrence sidewalks only on one side of the street. So, I think, I think we should be able to work around that and be flexible with this property on the sidewalks in that regard. I, I think Mr. Glover's done an awful job. Some of the problems you have with roof lines is the differentiation that the Secretary of Interior Standards require. I think, in balance, the house now has improved quite a bit with the retention of the balcony. I think we have, you know, some loving owners that are here. I, the only, I'm good, you can go either way with that bay window, if you want to go on to the council and retain it. I think that would be nice, because I think it's nice. I know the architect agrees with that. With Mr. Ruin, I kind of, the only thing on this elevation I have an issue with is the Juliet balcony. A matching window would have been, to me, more aesthetically curb-appealing, but in, by and large, I think, as I look through the Secretary of Interior Standards and some of the flexibility built into it, that I would support the project going forward, and hopefully look forward to seeing our Christmas decorations.
Thanks, John.
And let me, one follow one, to Mr. Eagleson. I think the council appointed us to make decisions, make hard decisions, and I consider my 325 combat missions to Vietnam, you walk up to the problem, not away from it. And so, I'm here to say, "Let's make the decision. It's council's choice to call up. I'm not recommending we go forward with them with anything except the choice that they want to make it on the bay window." And so, let's stand and deliver what we're appointed to do. Thank you.
I wanted to, I'm sorry. If you're going to, are you going to be the last one to speak? Would you like to be? Okay, let me, then let me jump in really quick.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I thought, I thought you'd read your remarks in.
No. I, I was saying that for the record because I am worried that this is a landmark house and that we do not have a historical evaluation of an expert to know whether the 1948 improvements are significant, and whether they're changing some of these doors and windows out and replacing historic material with new material, which is, it does say in number nine of the standards that we can do that, but it said, "When it is possible, it is good to replace something with a contemporary design when it does not destroy historic materials." And that's what I have a problem with in getting rid of some of the doors and the windows. I interpret the 1948 addition to be significant because I don't have clear opinion that it is not. Staff is saying that they think that it's not because the period of significance goes to 1936. However, the Department of Interior Secretary says, over the history and the development of a project, things that happen to it, they become significant. So, I am not completely in support of the project. There are some things that I can see that are valuable. I wasn't happy with the addition. I was having trouble with staff because they said that the additions to the house were not visible from the public right-of-way, and they clearly are. So, I'm not sure whether that meets the Department of Interior, you know, standards or not. Maybe you can address that. I know it's, you're saying it's an inferior elevation, but when you add these requirements, these findings that say it's in the back of the house and it is not visible from the public right-of-way, that's where I have a problem because of the word "and." So, I'm thinking I have to interpret it that it's not meeting the standards, because it is visible and the changes, the addition is visible. I understand it's going to be somewhat different, and maybe you can talk about the differentiation a little more. The Juliet balcony, I understand why they want it. They want to be able to go outside and look at the view. They can't do that with the enclosed balcony that they have now. They can do it somewhat from the open part. I get that. I would be more in favor of that side being modified like that than I would of the interior windows in that enclosed balcony. I don't think it's enough of a change to justify getting rid of such a striking design that these windows are so small, and I don't think you're making that much of a difference. You're going to have light and ventilation from the other windows into that bedroom. So, I wouldn't be in support of those windows being changed. The other thing I need to address, Jim, is when the Department of Interior says, the secretary says, that we should not change historic materials when it is not absolutely necessary to do so, in the lower elevation on the side where it, we're adding French doors instead of the window, there already is a historical door there where that bedroom can be accessed. So, to me, that door, that bedroom is accessible and the window provides ventilation, so I don't know that it's necessary to change the window to a door. I understand the design of why they want to do it, but that's where I'm having problems with the requirements. So, if you can explain it to me, because at this point, I don't think all these changes, I can't make that finding, that they meet those standards.
Questions, the, I think that the statement in the staff report that said the addition is not visible from the public right-of-way clearly was a mistake, but I think I explained it earlier, there is no requirement that an addition not be seen from, from a public viewpoint. The point is that the addition needs to be subordinate to the original structure. It has to be differentiated from the historic structure and not take away from the overall character of the historic structure. We think it meets those three criteria, and that would comply with the Secretary of Interior Standards. In regard to the door, I think it's, you have a point, and you can make the interpretation that you did.
Okay.
And in fact, I think that that was a recommendation, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, from the Design Review Subcommittee.
I didn't see that.
That they thought that that door was okay, and I can't remember the discussion, but we had a discussion about, you know, whether it was absolutely necessary or not, and I think that, based on the goals, the property owner, and also the fact that it's tucked under and less visible, it seemed to be appropriate by the Design Review Subcommittee. So, they recommended that that change was okay.
Then I would still like some guidance as far as the, the 1948 addition, whether we can clarify that that would not diminish, if we changed the windows, the doors in that, that addition, that we would not diminish the rating of this home and be significant.
Well, I feel pretty confident that it wouldn't change the rating of the home, the previous evaluation done by HRG, A, because it was an addition that was made, it wasn't part of the original 1928 structure. B, even if it was, it's not a significant alteration to the character-defining future of the building. Is there a slide on that one?
Yeah, I was looking for that.
Where is that? Am I going the wrong way? Yeah?
It's one of the first slides, the picture slides.
This one?
There you go.
Okay. So, if you look at the character of this particular elevation and the way it exists today, and this wing that was an addition, it's kind of a, just a, it, this, I would say is actually a pretty good addition if you were thinking about it from a today's standpoint of historic preservation. This is the more important elevation. It has more character-defining features. It has the nice, you know, picture window, the main door entry, you know, the fireplace up front, and this is, just looks like a kind of a wing and extension which is compatible, but differentiated. The change between this and the two bay, or two French doors is relatively a minor alteration. I think that, that kind of an alteration could be allowed for, even if it was determined as historic. So, it doesn't, it doesn't worry me that that change that's being proposed in the later 1948 addition is going to affect the overall rating of the historic building, even if it were historic, but the fact that it's an addition, even less so.
Okay. Well, let me just go around it really quick then, if you can leave those up, because they're helpful.
Sure, okay. Whatever one you want.
I would be, I would not be in favor of changing the bay window. I am in favor of leaving it wood, if that is possible, and changing the HIPAA requirement of stuccoing that. I am not in favor of changing the front, the four French doors in favor of two double doors on that side. On the side elevation, the south, no, I'm sorry, the north elevation.
No, no, no.
The north would be the side of the house. I am not in favor of changing the two small windows in the enclosed balcony area. I would like to leave the French, not have the French door and leave the window there because there is a door access to that bedroom. On the side elevation, which is the, the west elevation? I'm sorry, do I have it wrong? The north, you're correct. I'm sorry, the north. I would, in looking at it again, I am okay with the addition in the back and the changes to the interior. The Juliet balcony I can live with if it does not completely match the front balcony and is differentiated that it is new, and the two windows added. I would, I would be in favor of that. I think I covered all the changes. So, that's what, that's my opinion.
Okay. All right, thank you, Kathy.
You know, I think that the, the depth of the discussion that we're having tonight and the sophistication of the questions that we asked of staff is really a tribute to how far the city has come over the past several decades in appreciation of our historic properties. And certainly, Georgette and Larry, I think that the Historical Society, Historical Society has played a significant and very important role, and has a very important ongoing role in, in helping us to continue to improve in our ability to preserve these properties. So, I, I think that's, I think I find that aspect of tonight's proceeding very encouraging. I, I think it's important to note, as Jim did earlier, that the Secretary of Interior Standards are not meant to prohibit any modifications to historic structures, but to guide us in when those modifications are appropriate and what types of modifications are appropriate. And it's very important in this case that we are keenly aware of those guidelines, because as I think you stated, Kathy, this, this is a landmark and it is an HPPA property, and for both those reasons, we hold this to a higher standard than we do the average historic property. And I think, but it's also important that we're consistent when we look at other similar properties and the way we've treated those properties. And I, I think that we, in recent cases, such as the Cities Project, which is the, the beach club, we allowed a number of modifications to the, the windows and doors of that structure because it, the majority of the body felt that it was essential to the new use of the, or the more modern use of the building. So, I think we would not be inconsistent if we approved this application as it is with these modifications. I think that staff has done an excellent job tonight. John, I really want to compliment you in the way you answered the questions that we all had about the findings and about the Secretary of Interior Standards, and your answers as well, Jim. I think for me, the clarification about the, the north elevation, the importance of that being subordinate to the, the west elevation, which is the more important elevation, that was very helpful information, and it makes me able to support that particular modification. So, I am, I am in support of the project as presented to us. I think that it certainly should be possible for us to include a condition of approval for the city council to allow an amendment to the HPPA to enable you to retain that bay window. So, I am certainly in support of that. And I think something very important that we, we have to acknowledge tonight, we talk a lot about these properties being the resources of the community, but I think we also have to look at the fact that the people who choose to invest in them are also a very important resource to this community. If, if you didn't choose to invest your retirement savings into this home and give it the loving care that it needs, it might continue to deteriorate until another willing investor could be found to do this. So, you know, I, I hope you know that, that your efforts are appreciated by the community. So, with that, is anybody willing to, to make the motion with the, the condition of approval?
I am moved that we approve the Resolution of PC 14-6, the Resolution of Planning Commission Approval Cultural Heritage Permit 13-250, Casa Camarada, a request to allow expansion and remodel of historic house located at 418 Casador Lane with addition of, condition approval number 24. I guess in other words, to recommend the city council amend the HPPA agreement as far as that, that, that confirms with this.
It's odd putting it in a condition of approval. I wonder if it should just be a?
A recommendation.
Just a separate recommendation.
How about we put it? How about we put it, we should have something in the condition that says that the, the redesign of the bay window can be either as shown in the approved plans or if amended by the City Council allowed to remain the same.
Okay, that's for condition 44.
The HPPA is amended by the City.
That effectuates what we want to do.
Want to read it again, whole thing again with Mike on?
Why don't you go ahead and...
Resolution of PC 14-006, a resolution of the Planning Commission approving Cultural Heritage Permit 13-215 Casa Amarillo, a request to allow an expansion and remodel of a historic house located at 418 Cazador Lane with addition of condition number 24.
I also, it just, I had, you know, it seemed like the, the majority of the, the Planning Commissioners were kind of either/or on that. And I know that our applicants have gone through a long process and they may not want to go back to the City Council for this amendment. Would it be worth asking them if they...
We don't even need to include it if they're not interested. I think that's a good idea.
Right.
Most certainly.
Don't they save a lot of money?
Yeah, we're talking about the bay window, Jim.
Would you, would you like the, would you like the option of being able to do that?
It doesn't cost any more time or money.
Well, it costs time, but it wouldn't cost money. I mean, you can go ahead and proceed with your plans, but we would have to take it to a City Council meeting and you would have to attend and...
Can we start our plans?
Yeah, you could.
Well, I have one question. If those who sit in the council will, if any issue is going to exist approvals from the City Council, if anybody is objecting to the project?
Maybe.
If that was the case, then we would want to maintain the bay window, I'd say.
As, as, as proposed in the design?
Proposed in the design.
Okay.
Okay. So, and just, and, and Jim, if they, you know, once, once they ultimately got, got approval, they, they could go back even before they, you know, pull the permits and ask the City Council if they wanted to.
They make the request independently.
Independently, yeah, okay. So they, they still have that option.
So if you wanted to wait till after a period of this, you know...
I think we shared the two clutches since we're eliminating that condition.
Okay, let's, I move that we approve Resolution number PC 14-006, a resolution of the Planning Commission approval, approving Cultural Heritage Permit 13-215 Casa Amarillo, a request to allow an expansion and remodel of a historic house located at 418 Cazador Lane. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, so that's four to two.
Four to two. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, number 23.
That was living.
And I'm, and I'm...
23 is not, we're not adding any conditions.
Nope.
Are we going to take out that sentence?
About the side, 23 is about the sidewalk.
It's part of the municipal code anyway.
Yeah.
So 23 is fine either way.
Leave it.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much and we look forward to going by the house this Christmas and see your decorations.
Yeah, we should have had that condition of approval.
We want to see the train.
We'll come here and we'll see the outside.
All right. Let's see, was, anything from CoStar? Okay. All right, any other reports of commissioners? No?
I'm just, Don didn't mention, but we will be intervening for the LCP consultant this Friday. And then I'm hoping at the next study session to give you an update on the LCP process.
And if I could just say very quickly, John, that was a really excellent presentation and your fielding of the questions, just really first-rate, I think it really helped things go as smoothly as I could. So, great job.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
And I suppose we should just, in reports of commissioners, we did, several of us attended the workshop this evening and it was really a great effort by staff to get input from the design and construction professionals in the community to help guide the zoning ordinance.
Can you take your conversation outside, please?
Thank you, Don. To help guide the zoning ordinance update, you know, it's really, you know, it's a, it's wonderful that we are approaching this, this update in such an inclusive manner and getting the input of these professionals at this time rather than at, you know, a late date when we're reviewing the ordinance at the DIAs. So it was a really interesting meeting and, and it was nice to hear, there were a lot of compliments for both staff and DRSC from, from several of the architects there who didn't even have cases pending before us, so they had no reason to be nice. There were, there were quite a few architects, like about a dozen architects.
And some general contractors.
And then some HOA representatives.
Fifteen or twenty people, I think.
And then Talega HOA, some of the major HOAs were there.
Yeah, we saw our buddy Lou Avra. So it's always nice to see him. So with that, perhaps a motion to adjourn would be appropriate?
I will move we adjourn to the study session to be held at 6:00 PM on March 5th, 2014 in Council Chambers of City Hall located at 100 Avenue to Precino, San Clemente, California.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes six-zero.